No.
Call meeting to order?
Councilman Hidman. Councilman Hidman, Councilman Dory.
Yes.
Councilman Monty.
Here.
Councilman Vidal.
Here.
Councilman Jordan and Councilman Barhal Mail.
Here.
In compliance with New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, I hereby declare adequate notice that this meeting has been provided specifying that this meeting would be held on this date in the municipal building, 55 River Road at New Jersey at 7:00 p.m. This notice was sent for the record and Jersey Journal, posted on the bulletin board in the lobby of the Borough Hall and posted on the Borough's website. Councilman Barhal Mail, you need to see this letter.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any comments?
Yes.
Yes. Just your course.
Did you give him a certain time?
I told him seven.
So we're going to go into closed for that, correct?
Yes.
We'll open to the public. This time we'll open the meeting to the public. Anyone want to hear it? Mary?
Mary Hope in 606 on the pool table. Did I know that you had said at the last meeting that you were meeting with the, with COA about the 38 COA property and I was wondering if there was any summary on that? If we could hear the results of what that meeting was. I don't expect you to answer right now, but at some point, maybe in the course of the meeting, we could get a summary. Otherwise, I'll just have to go over the requests. You might have. I'm just kidding. The other question I had was, I was speaking to some people and I guess, Mr. Monty may know the answer to this. They were talking about the, the Edgewater kids that go up to the Little League in Leonia and they said the Edgewater kids are put on the Leonia teams. I was under the impression that the Edgewater kids just use their field and that they had their own teams, but apparently they're now being absorbed into the Leonia teams.
They're quite mixed, correct?
And that there's nothing indicating that any of those kids are Edgewater kids. All the uniforms and everything is all Leonia. And so I was wondering why that was happening.
Okay, I'll let you finish.
The other concern that the person who was talking to was they had their opening day and none of the Edgewater officials came up to the opening day, which...
I was, you know...
Yeah, I couldn't make it.
I went, I went and I didn't make the ceremony. I was at the field waiting and they called off the march to the field. I was sitting at the field and said, "Where is everybody?" I was a few minutes late for the ceremony, but I was sitting in, in, at the field and there was a few other people saying, "When did they come out?" "No, they'll be here." I'm sitting there and then ultimately they never showed up.
Oh, so they didn't come and play the games, no?
No, no, because it was rainy and muddy the day or two before.
Okay, well, then I'll explain that at least you...
I was there. I would have been there to receive them at the field and do what I thought was another continuous ceremony. I was sitting there with my daughter and a bunch of friends. Right.
Now, I, I need to pitch a mission. I mean, I go to all the games, my son's games except for tonight, but I need to pitch a mission.
So you were there?
I wasn't there that day. I had work on a Saturday. The, the games were canceled, there was a parade and that's it, Tony had went being running.
I don't understand why, and I, maybe it was just a misunderstanding, but as, as, you know, from resident of Edgewater, I thought the Edgewater teams were intact and were just using the Leonia fields for their...
I know that Grand Teets has a team of Edgewater kids that are beating the Leoni teams.
My son's other team is not a Leonia team. Uh, Mary, it's, I can't think of it, it's some solutions, CMI, CMIT Solutions is the name of the team and it's mixed. It's mixed.
And what uniforms do they have?
CMIT Solutions.
Wherever sponsors.
Yeah.
Oh, the sponsors have their own, have their own.
They're sponsored.
So there's no Edgewater...
I think we have some of our own sponsors on some of the, well, we did two years ago. This year on my liaison, I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It was my understanding that when they were integrating them to, to make these teams and they had the sponsors sponsoring them, they were playing together. That was my understanding.
Well, I, as a member of the public, that was not my understanding. I mean, maybe it changed from when they first went up there because, you know, obviously it's been running several years.
They're fighting over field time.
Every age group, boys, girls.
And, and I've, you know, I mean, just even playing together is not the worst thing. Ultimately, they'll be playing together in the future.
Well, let me ask you something, then. What's the funding for Edgewater, for, or Little League? Where's that going?
The RAP.
So it's not going to Little League?
Well, first of all, Joe, Little League, Edgewater Little League was basically self-funded through Joe, Joe, Joe Schiller and his fundraising efforts. I think we, I think we allocated a little bit in the budget, but mostly it was handled by him and Little League, Edgewater Little League Incorporated or whatever, whatever the organization is. And he's standing by, ready to go when we go next year to the field and they're going to continue to Leonia, which is nice. So for, first time, we'll be able to have our kids playing two different leagues, two different towns and kind of get to a level where a lot of all the places have where the kids might have a shot at, you know, doing a lot better as they go forward.
I, I don't understand. So in the future, are they going to only play together?
No, in the future, they're going to be Edgewater Little League, so they'll be running in the ball field like it has for all three years and the kids will have the opportunity also to continue to participate in the league up there together, mix. Which is good because most towns' kids can play in multiple leagues and recreation.
Yeah, I just don't know that, how that would be possible because I'm sure that the games will all conflict.
That's what I've been told several times by several people.
They would probably, I would think the kids would have to choose.
I was told that they, I was told that they would be able to do both. By several people, but anyway, we'll find out.
I understand that they would be allowed to play both, but what I'm saying is I think the games would follow.
Due to scheduling, I, I understand that they were going to be able to play both. Even with the scheduling, they were off different nights and they were going to be able to accommodate both within the league. So the kids will be able to double up and play two leagues with scheduling.
Okay.
That's what I was told.
Till they're ranked. And they'd have to schedule with the leading makeup kids. That would be the only problem. I, I was just surprised that they were, you know, merging together and then, you know, plus the age, all the questions, what about the, what's the, where are we going on that? What's the story on that? I presume you're meeting with the attorney and are we going to have some kind of a summary after you have the closed session with him? And do you have the other closed session on your discussion about it?
Saturday we have a meeting.
Saturday you have a meeting with him? Sorry.
Well, it's mediation.
Mediation.
Talking about the closed session tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, I think we can summarize afterwards. Why not, I mean, more reaction?
Well, it's going to happen more, that's why I'm still trying to do that tonight.
If you're requesting, I'll see why we shouldn't. I mean, with, what, not, not in the sense of what we could, what we were disclosing in closed session, but I mean, there should be a general update as, as well as...
Yeah.
Right? I mean, that's reasonable, like, I'm not talking out of school here.
No, I think that's wonderful. I'm glad to see that finally happened.
Well, I'm the one who's saying.
I'm sorry.
Somebody had to be quiet. No, I mean, it's, it's good. It's not a secret, that's for sure.
It has been.
Anyone else wish to be heard? So you're not closing any portion of meetings? This time we enter into closed session, we have the...
So what about, are you going to go with the next item to close session?
We have police department, we have Department of Public Works and...
I know. He's called it downstairs.
Yeah, so if we start these on two by the time he comes here.
Do you need to... And so is there a motion, Mayor?
Well, should we continue on with the, we, we have to wait until we ask, until we see some people showing up? Okay, so.
That's true.
June 16th, 2014. We have the minutes from the May 5th, 2014 work session and the two closed sessions. We have an ordinance, we have ordinance number 1506-2014, ordinance mending and supplementing Chapter 432, vehicles and traffic to revise the parking restrictions on certain sections of Old River Road in the Borough bedroom.
Is this a shady side?
Yes.
Again, this is the, Phil, this is just the, the nursery school, right?
Yes.
Situation is not to do with the...
No.
Where do we stand with regard to that project?
It permits...
Well, it permits the meters, no way to break anything.
Yeah, we're still trying to work through some of those issues. Hopefully, Mike and Sarah say it tonight.
Okay, so, so you're, you're working through sort of the front end, which, which originally, you know, written charter originally and then what we can, might want to do as, as the re-ordinance?
Revised.
Revised ordinance, okay. All right, is there, do we have a committee on that or something?
Well, it's a good idea.
Well, I mean, you're obviously going to determine what was, you know, what was originally and what we have the flexibility to change it with a reason, but I think we should probably reach out to a couple of people down there and certainly Mike's got all the people's opinions because I think, you know, it's not just the people that are there. I think at this point, there's, there's people who are saying, "Listen, you know, it's a parking lines meter, people should be paying for it, employees, people do it all over the country and why is that different?" And I think that's legitimate, a legitimate concern and legitimate point of view. Especially if you're going to use it and abuse it and go, and go jump on the, on the bus and go head to the city. So, but I mean, that's for a committee or not a meeting, right?
Uh, there was a negotiated, there was a negotiation that originated this whole mess, right?
Yeah, it was a negotiation where a developer donated the land and it was to be designated to provide parking for shady side and now it's, it's not working that way. People are using it for commuter parking. So we had a couple of ideas on how to solve that problem with permits and more than one permit, which may get more complicated than we need to, but I think we, you know, we'll be able to reach for some sort of consensus.
Well, we definitely should before the snow comes again. We definitely need to make sure we, we allocate that section because that makes sense and, you know, as part of revision.
Any other questions?
Not in the ordinance, I'm sorry.
Resolutions, we have 2014-144 through 2014-154. Do we have any?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, remind me, Phil, about 152. What, what's exactly the mission here? Uh, negligee for massive, is that, is that for the development? Is that for housing? I mean, catch up garbage.
Massive lane?
Yeah, 152, uh, 2014-152. Authorized negligee for prepared survey, preliminary design for early realignment, massive, is that for the...
I don't know, it's stuck in my head.
I have some information.
Okay, I'm sorry. And I, and I probably could have looked it up and do apologize for including that.
I'm not sure if this is the effort to try to straighten out that curve by massive lane?
Perform existing condition locations at 1600 feet of River Road, beginning at the entrance of the passive parkway where the Henry Hudson Drive is at municipal boundary line runs subtly to...
Okay, all right, then I knew it, yeah. Massive lane for me, oh, okay, gotcha. Okay, so I was sort of descriptive, all right, great. Then I can order this.
That's the realigned River Room?
Yeah.
Right.
To...
It's to construct a climbing lane up the hill to meet with the improvements for going into Fort William, lessen the accident potential.
It's a good thing.
Straighten out the curve, is that what you want to do?
On the right side.
It's like an access line.
Who's paying for that, maybe?
The county, well, hold on one second, let me tell you that. The county went to Mr. Ascalis. The county, um, would look to fund the actual construction of this improvement and then the Borough will pay the, the engineering of, um, the...
Negative, right.
For the scope of services. That was the agreement.
You know, it's interesting since I guess we're kind of pill-tied here. The, I was told that, like, if there was any effort to widen it in that section or any section, that eminent domain would have, would have to be facilitated and conducted by the Borough because the county doesn't do it. They, they have a longstanding agreement, they don't, they don't go into eminent domain of, of, so that's just, because we talked about for the, for the offset for the colony and all kinds of stuff and concerns, so, you know, it's going to be sort of our control when it, if that day comes. Which I, I didn't know. I thought the county could just go ahead and just start acquiring, you know.
That's why we have to consider that walkway that we're talking about.
Well, that's right, yeah.
And again, these resolutions are, any questions?
Uh, that's it for me.
Majority of our basic housekeeping.
The ABC local license is a general renewal, right?
They're, they're not, uh, correct. Uh, they're not all listed on there. Of course, what I provided to you is a draft at this point because there are two, several businesses that have not yet received a tax clearance.
Right.
For me, without that... Without that, they cannot be moved.
I'll have to recuse myself from that situation, okay?
Any other concerns with the resolutions? Phil, you want to hit, touch base on the life saving rule?
Oh, yes, thank you. Chief Skidmore had approached me, Cheryl Reynolds had, um, had informed him that several of them, they had a life save, basically.
The ambulance department.
Yes. The EMS crew paid Cheryl, um, Cheryl Reynolds, Lee A., Clay Ruffle and Jonathan Gill. So at the next meeting with your permission, we'd like to recognize those three EMS crew for a life save. Be a happy beginning, right?
Yeah. It's all motivation, yeah.
Okay, so that's okay, I can invite them.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Great, and as far as the recovery planning and...
Yeah, real quick, Mayor, the committee, RFQ committee met before the meeting. It looks like we're going to make a recommendation for Clark, Katton and Hints. There were two proposals received, one by higher school, the other by Clark, Katton and Hints. Clark, Katton and Hints has done several of these recovery planning studies for several burdened county communities, so...
Wish me, I'm sorry.
So that'll be on the agenda for your next meeting.
I remind you, I'm sorry, is that FEMA who's paying it?
That is a $30,000 community development grant.
Got it.
For?
For a strategic recovery planning grant, which essentially they're going to study the walkway and the damage it received and what we can do in the future to prevent it.
It's all part of the evaluation.
It'd be a good, a good plan that we can share with, with the walkway people. It has been paid for with a grant. COA revised round three rules. We received the memo from Catherine Gregory, our planner. Real quickly, the new, new revised third round regulations that were published on June 2nd essentially eliminate the bonuses that we once had, two for one bonuses. A new economic feasibility study is required in regard to any future affordable housing. The establishment of a 10% set aside. There used to be a fluctuating growth share formula which they've eliminated and now it's just a flat 10%. Requires a capacity study for water, sewage and utilities, how it affects Edgewater. Three components to the total obligation, zero rehab units, unanswered prior obligation. They came up with a total of 116 units. And then the fair share plan, 227 units for 47. 227 is the fair share obligation, however, the second number, the two, which is the 47, is the buildable limit capacity based on their calculations. And that previous 116, that'll get deducted with the 75 from, from IDW. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. The River View at City Place.
Craig, I'm sorry, we can't move on to that. What has it required for COA, has it changed? It's still five for one or has that gone down? When you say 10%, is that, is that the new requirement? 10% of all units, so we went to 20% to 10%?
However it was formula driven is now a flat 10% rate. They, they used to have a convoluted formula which they seem to eliminate.
That, that's pretty significant, so, I mean, we just worked through it.
Yeah, actually, I mean, Catherine, in my conversation with Catherine, she feels that COA is possibly shortchanging the statewide obligation using that flat percentage number, but for some reason, there must have been a ideology behind it, but...
Has she given you any studies of how that's going to impact Edgewater?
No, she, she hasn't done that yet. She hasn't done that. She said that'll be her next, next project to provide to you.
Well, and it's also her next one's coming forward, so it's not like...
Right. Well, that's a good question, actually.
Can't be going backwards.
Griffin Alexander received the correspondence from an attorney representing the River View at City Place Towneamenting Association in regard to a nuisance complaint in regard to a restaurant within City Place emanating strong odors from their cooking. This facility has passed its building, fire and health regulations. The health official addressed this letter and responded back. Phil Boja's been in contact with the law firm. So right now, I mean, they, they, the restaurant in question has fulfilled their obligations for its safety, health and construction and fire. So it's more or less based on case law. Phil wants to chime in here, it's pretty much a nuisance issue between the tenant and the restaurant.
Or the private, private issue.
We received the proposed third round amendment, the settlement agreement, which essentially addresses the snow, um, snow pile, or as Mr. Mousary has termed it, the glacier that once was at the parking area. Now that we have this, Phil's reviewed it, we can go ahead and amend it and approve it. And then what we wanted to address was there were some questions in regards to the regulation of parking and things, so we wanted to address that with some of the interested parties who are partying to this agreement. And I'm sure we can work that out. I don't know, Phil, if you have anything you want to comment on.
No, we, we've touched on that a little bit. We're just going to work through some of the issues, like Mousary's instrumental in moving this issue along. We do have to talk about how we're going to, going to have permits, not going to have permits.
Well, but let me ask you that. I mean, does it make sense to drill down with these original interested people as to what some of the ideas might be that they have, number one, and what we're kind of talking about as far as free and, you know, equal and fair and kind of doing a way that, you know, tiered system of who gets to stay and who gets to go?
I think we should have as much input as we need to have.
So that'll be sort of like round one and then round two will be us kind of maybe talking to some people there on our own and come up with a consensus of what we want to recommend? Is that how, is that how you see it?
Yeah, that's a good, good way to start.
I know Michael had taken some pictures previously at enough time to permit it, but I mean, I'm sure Michael can hang around and perhaps share those photos with you after the meeting. So we can start with that process. I have begun a process along with Councilman Vidal and, and with the parking. The new meter will hopefully be installed at the 915 River Road location shortly. Councilman Hidman had provided me some information on some of the new parking meters with downloadable apps and, and replenishing the meter through your, through your phone. So this meter will have all of that, so all the bells and whistles.
Oh, and automatic enforcement as well?
Yeah.
Similar to the foil pad parking?
So essentially, what'll happen now is through the police department, whoever the chief assigns to monitor this can simply log on to the parking meter through their phone or any computer and they can see who's valid, who's in violation.
So explain to, so the part we just talked about before that in terms of deciding, you know, who's stickers and who's not.
Well, this is, no, 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 this is for, this is for the, the, a lot by Whole Foods.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of course, we also... But however, however, once we get to that issue with shady side, this is definitely the meter we'll use.
Okay, got it.
It, it's, it's a good meter. We feel that it's, it has all the...
And then maybe more of pork?
Yep, yep, sure. Yep, so. And then, um, with the help of Councilman Vidal as well, we've been researching the website. We have, I have four new proposals, Councilman Vidal has the fifth. And we haven't shared this with the council yet because we just sort of collated them and we'll get them out to you, so...
Do you think we could get, talk about it in the next two weeks and vote on it at the next regular meeting? Because it's all as a resolution, right? Because, I mean, I'm just saying, you have to, you, you've wanted this for so long.
Yeah, now, well, here, here's the thing and I want, I thank you and I neglected to bring this up, but I want to go to the next item. The interesting component about these four proposals here, it all ties in and I'm sort of glad Barbara had presented to you a meeting management system, all right? Their agendas and, and all those downloads. These website proposals contain that within it. So it's not as if we're going to buy something with that vendor and then use another vendor. So I spoke with Barbara last week. I want her to sit down with these vendors as well to see which meeting management system she is inclined to use. Because they all operate differently.
Okay. What about your request for the software for...
Everything's in here as far as registration for recreation programs, pay, everything, pay.
Because one of the things I recommend to them was, and maybe you might want to do is, is to kind of do a reverse thing. Instead of them coming in and telling us everything they have and saying, "Well, which one has the most?" Like, for us to come up with the 15 things we have to have and see who comes closest to having those 15, or 10, or 20.
Well, the interesting...
You know, be able to pay over.
Let me, let me just share with you these vendors' names. Gov Office, Civic Plus, E-Gov and, um, what's the name of this outfit? Q-Send. These are the four leading government website vendors nationwide.
Right, and is, is government on the cutting edge of e-commerce? That's a question I have.
I think if, if you sit, if you sit through a webinar on these, which we can set it up, if you sit through a webinar, they, they've tackled every issue.
All right, that's great. I'll invest some time if you guys want to try to fast, not fast track this because we couldn't fast track this at this point with that, uh, more stuff.
But the important thing is, these, one of Councilman Vidal's requirement, when we initially started into this last year, we were possibly utilizing a vendor for this, a vendor for that. We did find a vendor that can possibly coordinate this. These vendors have already thought of these things and have done it.
True.
And, and the important thing is this meeting management component. So we'll, we'll get those out to everybody.
Well, is anybody else interested? I mean, obviously, you're in a group, you're going to look at...
We have a company called Yikes, yikes.com and they do e-commerce, that's what their, what their forte is.
Obviously, these four have to be seriously considered because they got everything.
Absolutely, yeah.
So if you make a recommendation and I'll take, spend some time, does anybody else want to like, and then we'll, because we can all do it individually.
You can do this, we're glad to.
And of course Debbie and, and Barbara will have, are you saying this right?
Yes.
Because they have to be able to...
Most importantly.
Yeah, most importantly, right? Well, that's exciting. That's very exciting. Great. Looking forward to it.
Progress on that. So, um, and then one more thing, we had an issue Barbara may have shared with you, some of the correspondence in regards to some deck issues on Veterans Way and seems to be related to a neighborly issue, was how the neighbors... I spoke to Phil about this. So originally, when we had some of these minor zoning issues pop up, we've had, unfortunately, Bob Monticello deal with them and sort of explain the zoning process, what's permitted, what's not. Unfortunately, Bob's no longer with us, so I had recommended to Phil that perhaps the Planning Board Attorney was filling in for the zoning Board Attorney, perhaps should be the best person to sit with these people to sort of interpret the zoning at these locations, so...
Has anybody physically had all of it? Is it like crazy?
I haven't.
No, I'd suggest you should, but I just, I'd be interested in reading that, it looks pretty crazy.
Yeah, part of the, part of the dispute is the complaining party has already built their deck, a very large deck and the person next to them wants to build a similar structure and doesn't want that.
We're going to build it already?
Yeah, the guy who built it already has a much larger deck.
It's wearing magnetic.
He is objecting to the same building, a comparable sized deck, saying it's not permitted, so.
And that's all I have for you, gentlemen ladies.
Okay, so this time it is promotion to enter into closed.
You have to mention, okay, the, any pending litigation and matter involved in employment